Is the takeaway that it was...
We'll get an example of that. This light is intended to light that sidewalk.
But if it was fully shielded, fully cut off, would it still be stupid to have that light there?
It would be stupid to have that light at 20 feet. You want to bring that light down. You want to put six-foot, or not even six-foot, maybe four-foot bollards with the lighting directed right on the sidewalk. If you need to light the areas in front of the door, put a can light on the doorway that lights the ground out right in front of where you want the entryway. You've got steps or whatever it is you're trying to... What you're trying to do is you're trying to make sure the pathway is lit so you know where you're stepping and the stairways are lit so you don't walk off the edge of it. And so we'll see some good examples of that and some pictures I have in the later part of this presentation that shows how this light should work. We've got a very similar situation to this in a church. We've had two churches go in. Churches typically get meshed in with your neighborhood residential properties. They put 20-foot poles in the parking lot. And now, as far as the eye can see on adjacent properties, they're illuminating all that other property. I don't know why the neighbors behind them haven't just screamed. Because you see their bedrooms and they are LEDs. They're full cutoff, per our ordinance at the time. But as you'll see, a lot of LED lights put the light source right at the edge. It's not like you have a bulb up inside. The LED array is right on the very edge. And they typically now have options to have drop shields added so that if you stick it up at 20 feet, you can actually do the math to say the shield has to come down so many inches so the cutoff point does not go outside the property line. Here, the school probably owns all this property and you've got buildings that are picking it up. But these trees here now are not going to go dormant at the right time of the year. They see sunlight all day long, this photograph. You'll see trees that are like that that don't shed their leaves until very late in the season as a result of the light source. Okay, it's very close by. So dropping the height so it's an appropriate height so you're not throwing the light that far and shielding it so and spacing the poles so that you're not being blinded by that light as you're walking up here. And you don't leave these shadow areas. So clutter we talked about. Yeah, we finished the clutter. Energy waste. On average, in the US alone, outdoor lighting uses about 120 terawatt-hours of energy. And again, this is probably four- or five-year-old information. That's enough energy to meet New York City's total electricity needs for two years. At least 30% of the lights, US loans, are wasted. Mostly the lights that aren't shielding. That adds up to 3.3 billion or at least 21 million tons of carbon out outside per year. It's just an incredible waste of energy and pollutants in the atmosphere. We have to plant 875 million trees a year to do that. I don't know if this is a good shot, but I will say that the next time you fly into DFW, take a look as you're coming in on the final approach. You can see this neighborhood here. Either they have very few lights or they have full cutoff lights. It's very apparent in parking lots where you will see the outline of a light on the ground but you won't see the source coming up in your eyes. And so you'll see very good and bad examples. You'll see some that the spotlight is... It looks like they're trying to spotlight the plants. It's incredible how intrusive some of these lights are. Urban Skywell is the main of astronomers worldwide. And it's the combined output of all lights in the city that caused this guy to be washed out. This gentleman's house, that's what it normally looked like. They have power outage. I guess he had a generator. He came outside and took a photograph of the Milky Way over his house. You've never seen that before. And it's rapidly becoming worse, as I said. That's that tsunami sweeping across the United States from east to west. And if we don't encourage quality lighting, this is what we're all going to face in the future. This is Los Angeles in 1908, seen from Mount Wilson Observatory. Mount Wilson was one of the premier observatories of its day in 1908. A lot of good science was done from there. A lot of great discoveries were made from there. This was 1988, seen from Mount Wilson. Now, this is instructive. What you're seeing here is a combination of a bunch of high-pressure sodium and low-pressure sodium lights. You see that orange glow? That's about 2,700 Kelvin. It's below 3,000, probably. You see very few, very bright mercury vapor lights probably along the main corridors of the streets and maybe some large industrial park areas. These orange lights are pretty simple for an observatory to filter out because it's sodium. It's only two bands of emission. Move forward to 2015. You see, there is some control of lights in terms of shielding, but you also see a complete color shift. This was the early adopters of LED lighting. Rich in blue, broadband emitters. It's not just emitting in sodium, the yellow bands. It's emitting broadband colors. Every color in the rainbow. Observatories cannot filter every color of the rainbow out or they can't do any science at all. Basically, Mount Wilson Observatory cannot do anything but narrowband imaging. Again, impact wildlife and ecosystems. And all repeated, for millions of years, life relied on Earth's predictable rhythm of day and night. It's encoding the DNA of all plants and animals. Humans have radically disrupted this cycle by lighting up the night. Plants and animals have found the Earth's daily cycle of life and darkness to govern life-sustaining behaviors such as reproduction, nourishment, sleep, protection from predators. Scientific evidence, and this is becoming a much bigger scientific study, is proving how artificial light at night has negative and deadly impacts on many creatures, including plants, insects, amphibians, birds, and mammals, and humans, that have a category. So nocturnal wildlife, those that are active at night, roost by day. Some species are rare and threatened. They're endangered species. Some provide imminent ecological health benefits. Some provide economic benefits. What are the effects of light pollution on their habitat and behavior? Well, owls hunt at night, right? Now, some animals are roosting and trying to hide at night. They get predators go find them. Tree frogs, they're calling for their mates at night. Fireflies, they rely on their transmission of light to actually find their mate. For the longest time, we thought fireflies were being wiped out by pesticides. As it turned out, we're actually driving them out of our neighborhoods because their light can't be seen by their potential mate if the neighborhood is awash in light. Bats are hunting for insects, spotted sea trout. Their habitat is inundated with growth of algae and things like that. And so they tend to go in other places to reproduce when those areas are inundated with light. So birds that migrate are hunted at night, navigate under the light and starlight. Artificial light can cause them to water off course toward the dangerous nighttime landscapes of cities. In Chicago, they did a lights-out-at-night experiment. There was a group of people that were actually studying all the bird impacts. You come in morning, pick up all these dead birds. And there's actually a museum area that categorizes the birds, the species that are being impacted by the attraction to the buildings at night. And those impacts then were a curious study. They turned the lights out for buildings at night and they had nearly no impacts by turning off those lights in that experiment. So moving on. You've got diurnal wildlife. Many insects are drawn to light. Artificial lights can create a fatal attraction. Defining insect populations, again, the firefly will negatively impact the species that rely on those insects for food. So the bats and the frogs and things like that. Or possibly pollination. Predators exploit this attraction to their advantage by affecting food webs in unanticipated ways. So sea turtles were one of the studies very early on. Sea turtles relied on the cycle of moonlight. Certain time of the month, the mother turtle would come in and lay her eggs in the nest. And 28 days later, those turtles would hatch. They would follow the glistening moonlight over the ocean and the starlight over the ocean back to the sea. Now, put a big city right behind it, like Miami, light up that city. This is what you see when the hatchlings come out of the nest, just walking in circles. Some of them walking right across highways, going towards the city lights because they were drawn to the city lights more than they were to the sea. So there's lots of habitat disturbance. That replacement of nocturnal cycle by elevated levels of artificial lighting over broad natural areas creates all sorts of things. There are studies with salmon. There are studies with a number of other types of animals. Wildlife biodiversity is being impacted by this. And then looking at the top of the food chain, what about us humans? They've done studies where they did... Took students, put them in a completely dark room, and then the next morning, took their blood samples as opposed to another group of students that was kept in a room, lighted with blue-rich light all that night. And what they found was melatonin was suppressed. And melatonin is what makes cancer in humans. What is the benefit of wildlife, right? If there are exposures to more light pollution than humans are, we can at least go inside and turn the lights out in most cases. What are the physiological effects of light pollution on wildlife? Could there be possible physiological changes resulting? AMA put out a fabulous study a couple of years ago that supports the concerns raised by the International Dark Sky Association for more than five years, assuming that... Presuming that LEDs, blue-rich light, and outdoor lighting technology was causing this harm. And the AMA study is not only providing that additional rigorous scientific evidence to buttress IDA's longstanding efforts to raise awareness for the potential hazard of blue-rich light, but also speaks to the bold leadership that the medical community has consistently demonstrated on this critical human health and environmental issue. So while we support the use of LED lighting, we want the right types of LEDs. And so a lot of science went into getting blue-rich LEDs filtered and get down to the warmer color temperatures with the lighting that they were producing to eliminate some of these risks. So let's talk about the source of the problem. It's really the choice of lights. We need to know our lights. And we've talked a little bit about this in some of the presentations. There's low-pressure sodium and high-pressure sodium. These are the ones that we've pretty much seen as today's mercury vapor work was outlawed. Mercury vapor is pretty much outlawed now. All new fixtures, probably hard for people to even probably replace the bulbs that they go out looking for. And the lights that we all grew up with, those incandescent bulbs that we put up in our fixtures, even those that have been retired except in now the old historical-type devices. We've moved on to light fixtures that are either LED or the mercury vapor... Trying to remember the name of this thing. Compact blue fluorescent. It's got mercury in it, but it's compact blue fluorescent. So these lights, other than for preserving some old historical things, you won't find those on the shelf anymore. You will find some halogen incandescence. And you can see the power level's going down up here. So this is the smart thing to look at. How much power is it taking to light this bulb up? And we've moved from the traditional incandescent lights to the right here, now to LED bulbs. LEDs are very power-efficient and you can get them in blue-filtered versions. Also, when you're in the store looking for lights at Home Depot or Lowe's, look for this seal of approval here from IDA. This tells you that this light fixture has the proper shielding and/or the proper adaptive controls. And that was an adaptive control. That's a motion sensor or day-and-night sensor so the light's not on all the time. You don't have to remember to go turn it off. You set it up with timers and motion sensors and things like that. So definitely pay attention when you're looking for light. Know about spectrum. This is when I talk about its sodium vapor. This is the two sodium lines I'm talking about. This is the old low-pressure sodium. High-pressure sodium had some more in the red. A little bit down to blue. They were a more pinkish light source when we were using them. And then we started moving towards LED. And we started with LEDs like this one, where you had lots of blue. This is what wipes out the night sky very effectively, especially if you don't pay attention to the fact that when you do shield the light, you cover that half that's facing up and direct the light down, you can actually cut the amount of power in the half that you're lighting that light up with because you've got twice as much light being reflected to the ground when you use that. When you're in the store looking, look for these... This is called warmer, cooler, okay? Plant lights and bug lights and things like that tend to be these cooler temperatures. Warmer temperatures are more yellow and less impactful on the humid body and the alleyway. Look at the types of fixtures. Full cutoff means you have absolutely no light coming up above the horizontal. All the lights directed down. Cut-off, you might let a little bit. You might have a bit of a sag lens down below which lets a little bit of light come up. This one's better than that. Semi-cut-off, sag lens. This is now letting even more light go up. And then, you know, non-cut-off is like these acorn lights and bulbs. Even if you get a good fixture like this, you can do the wrong thing with it. Tip it up. I see this a lot, a lot of times at boat docks where they take a perfectly good light, but they've got a pole on one side of the dock. They didn't want to put lights on the other, so they tipped it up. Well, that's allowing light now to go up. These sag lenses, they do the same thing. They let light go up. You'll see a lot of these box fixtures that are... A lot of these are hung on the side of buildings and they're trying to light up a parking lot. And as you're walking into the door, this thing's just blinding you as you're making entry into the building. So you want the useful light to go where you want it to be, right? So get a shield, set the light up where you know where that cutoff point is. This should be the edge of your property. And don't put the light up so high where it just lights up your neighbors. Spill light is a spec you'll see on lights. That tells you how much is coming out the opposite side where you might need a little bit of an area covered behind the light that you don't want it to spill out because maybe this is the three-foot area to the edge of your parking lot. Be aware that if you don't reduce the amount of light when you do this full cutoff reflector, the upward reflected light can do just as much harm, bouncing off the parking lot and heading off in the direction you didn't intend for it to go. Here's examples now, compare and contrast. Here's a sports field. You can't... You can see there's a little bit of spill light around the periphery and that's probably where the fans might be sitting. But you can see they've done a very good job of throwing the light forward, not allowing the light to spill backwards into areas of unintended light fixtures. Here's an area where a town did an experiment. They wanted to address the clutter problem we talked about. So you can see the very front part of this street has all full cutoff fixtures now. They got rid of all the acorn lights. The other half of the street back here is all your acorn lights. So you can see the dramatic difference this made. This is an example that I've actually experienced. Here's a gas station that did the right thing. They recessed all the bulbs. They've cut the amount of light down very nicely so you don't see a lot of reflection, specular reflection, off the concrete. When I pull into a gas station like this and I get my gas and then I pull back out, I can pretty well retain my dark adaptation and get out on the highway without a problem. Here, I pulled into one of these gas stations. When I went to leave because of all the glare that I had in my eyes, I actually had to stop at the edge of the driveway because I needed my dark adaptation to come back a little bit before I pulled out of the street. So you asked a little earlier, Mayor, about, you know, what's the takeaway here? Well, here's a very similar thing. Done with bollards. These are low lights, but this is attempting to light a pathway. But I can guarantee you, as soon as you get out of this pathway and around the corner here, you'll have absolutely no dark adaptation left and you won't be able to see the ground if you're trying to walk on it. So don't do this. Take a look at a bollard light like this. This is putting the light right down on the ground. Here's another one. It's a very low lamp. It's lighting the pathway, but it's... There's no glare. Cannot see the source of that light. So I will preserve my dark adaptation. And when I leave this path to go up a dark area, I'll be able to see where I'm walking even if there's no light there. Be conscious of your houses. I don't know why people do this except during holidays. I'm seeing more of this type of lighting now in commercial areas around windows on businesses. I see these LED light strips and they're just horrible looking. Most of them are white. They're not even red or any other color. And yeah, it outlines the window, but you can't read any of the advertising inside of it unless they've got a neon sign in there. This is a good example of what not to do. Your upward-facing lighting. They did a good job on their sidewalk here, but they're lighting up the building. You can see when it hits this, there's a shadow cast behind it. So they're throwing a lot of light up into the night sky and they're over-lighting the entryway here. Here's some good examples, downward-facing lights. They're only lighting the ground right in front. You don't see the source of that light as you're driving up. You don't see the source of these lights as you're coming up. They're lighting that entryway. So you need to get in and out of the door, ingress and egress as well controlled. These are good examples. So there are some easy solutions. Shield the lights, light those lights up, not up for sideways. Use light timer controls whenever possible or other adaptive controls. I've got two neighbors. One side of me, he had a mercury vapor light. I talked him into allowing me to replace it with a fully-shielded light. But he still wanted it on 24/7. In fact, he didn't even have a light control on the thing that turned off during the daytime, as far as I could tell. On the other side, I've got a neighbor who put adaptive controls on their house. All of us are pretty well aware, we're very tightly involved, when people are supposed to be coming and going, we usually call each other and say, hey, I'm going to be out of town for a week. You see anybody coming or going, you know, call the police. The neighbor that had the mercury vapor light, he got robbed three times when he was out of town. They broke into his shop and took his gear. It was lit, you could see. And I wouldn't have never noticed if anyone were moving around over there because the light was on all the time. Now, I'm in my backyard observing the night sky quite often. The neighbor on the other side, if their light comes on and it's 2:00 in the morning, I know she's not out there. She's a school principal. She's asleep, getting ready for a book the next day. I probably don't investigate what's going on. So adaptive controls are a good way to save energy and that's the sell for people. It's really not so much the astronomers as much as it is letting people know that they can save money by putting some of these lights on place. So be aware of the good quality. Look for the seal of approval. How can you take action? Well, you guys are doing a great job now just moving forward with your ordinances. There's STEM activities. This is a great project for students and scouts. My daughter's a Girl Scout. She's going to earn her Gold Award by actually going and doing a dark sky place evaluation at a park, a Girl Scout park over near Paris, Texas. And so she'll go out and take the measurements and do the things that you guys are doing to get ready for your dark sky community award. She's going to do it for a dark sky place award out there. So it's great for science fair scouts, towns, and neighborhoods. Neighborhoods, in addition to what you're doing, if you want your neighborhoods to be recognized, there's a nice little award that Cindy Longo-Cassidy in the Texas IDA section has for allowing neighborhoods to actually put up some signs themselves when they go in and do their work around the houses and things. Sky quality meter is a good way to do your measurements. I assume you'll be installing the battery-operated version here or one of the ones that take continuous monitoring 24/7 to show what you're doing over time. This is that portable daylogger. I've got one of these in the backyard. It's a great way to track when, you know, how you're doing day over day. So during the day, you'll get a very, very, very... Sorry, this is backwards on the day. And that should be night, this should be day. Have to correct that. So at night, you'll get a nice dark reading. During the day, you'll get a very bright reading. You can actually see the moon. You can see the Milky Way cross over the top of the detector. So I appreciate you guys inviting me out to help you. I'm very excited that you guys are doing this. I would be happy to take any questions.
I was just going to get something to eat.
Ricky just wanted the lights on for a snack, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, he was hungry. Sandwiches are wrong.
Hi, dude. So if we get the designation and then we have implements around us like we saw that continue to pollute the dark sky, is that going to affect our readings? Because we're such a small town. And will that affect us from continuing to have the designation?
Great question. So your concern is if you do the right thing and your neighbors don't listen, don't care, don't do anything, will it affect you? The answer's no. In the case of dark sky communities, unlike dark sky parks, there is no minimal level. What the dark sky community awards from IDA is intended to do is just promote good behavior across the US. Anywhere we can promote that good behavior. And one of the things you're asked to do is be the model and accompany me maybe to Dent and to Frisco and say, you know, here's an example of what we're doing and we're concerned. We are your small neighbor to the east or the west. And we'd like to know what you're going to do to help us. I know the fellow that came to talk to you earlier about this program is, he works at Dent and he's trying to get Dent to do some things. And I think the win there for them is when they make the transition to LED lighting, selling them on doing the LED lighting with the right full cutoffs, the right shields, the right color temperatures. And that will be what protects you from their light.
I mean, we've installed dark skies lighting outside towns. When you leave tonight, you'll see it all.
Yeah, yeah.
We've put in this whole side town. We just had them all installed.
Yes, but unfortunately, we were unable to get them lower because of coaster standards. So you could know they're high enough that unfortunately you can see them.
I understand, yeah. That's the problem with those church lights.
They are shielded.
They are shielded.
So, you know, we took a happy look.
So we'll take a look at them and see if they could be even better shielded. And they may have picked a fixture we can't get another shield for, but that's something I want to start going back to the LED manufacturers and saying, we really need this. We got those shields designed and built for the huddled lights and we had mercury vapor. Why can't we do the same thing with them here?
When I saw the specs for the lights, there was an option. I'm not sure whether the coaster purchased them or not, but they were semi-shielded. You were trying to prevent light being thrown in a certain direction or to a house. But I didn't see anything as far as, you know, full draw shields.
These lights aren't... They didn't have the IDA certification on them.
Yes, so that means they're... Nothing above the horizontal. But at 20 feet, they're going to be annoying to the eye.
Yeah.
The way to address that is to try and get a drop shield that gets that cutoff right where the light needs to be rather than in your eye. And so there might be options for that. What you probably saw is a lot of these LED arrays, the more advanced manufacturers, they're controlling the throw by moving... They've got like... Remember those fluorescent light fixtures that had kind of a reflective grid that you would see through? So you were off to the side. You wouldn't have the fluorescent in your eyes. So they used a thing like that and then they would offset the LED in one corner or the other to throw the light in the direction they wanted it to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right, next up. We have a discussion of the MDD-sponsored community event on October 14th. That's July. That's been allowed. This year, it's added the MDD.
Hi, I'm Linda with the MDD Board. And we picked October 14th before they take it 5:00. And I called the fire department. They're going to be out there again with the fire trucks. And we got a van's house. And we got a van's house that they normally put water on the sides and we told them no water. So the kids will still be able to use the slides though. So it'll be a bigger slide for the kids. And I'm going to call a contact Linda has I'm going to call a contact Linda has for the Sheriff's Department for awareness, and see if they'll come out, get their hoover and talk to the kids as well. And we have a van again this year, so we're excited. Thank you for getting the park done in time for the picnic, so awesome, it's beautiful. And Clint, thank you for helping me with, helping us with the meat again this year. We're not going to order as much, so we're thinking about maybe putting something on the, maybe Facebook page, Linda found a little thing where people could sign up and say what they're going to bring for the picnic, maybe we could kind of have, say, all desserts served, whatever. So we get Linda and see how we can put it on the Facebook page. Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the city spend any money on it?
No.
Okay.
No money from the city.
It's all MDD, 100% MDD, right?
MDD.
Good.
We're going to take it all.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Of course, we'll all need volunteers, tables, chairs.
My understanding is the calendar is worked right this time, but it is the week after. Texas OU.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're excited, you know, we're hoping, we want people to come out, start to have a talk. I'm excited. Let's make this a, you know, after the picnic last year and the crawfish, you know, hopefully we'll get the word out, people come out, join us a little bit.
I think Phil Grant told me this is actually the 50-year anniversary this year of Lakewood Village.
Oh, wow.
Last year was the 40th of the city. This is the 50th, the beginning when they first, when they first turned the dirt and created Lakewood Village, when the development first began.
Wow.
So 50 years.
Did you have a question?
I was just going to comment, if you decide to do flyers, maybe possibly put in flyers in my office, if that kind of helps, helps spread the word.
Can we put the flyers in with the water mills?
Yep.
Oh, that's trash, just go break them out.
It's not going to cut on my mayor's letter, right?
One page less for the mayor.
Hey, hey, hey.
Any other questions? Any questions from, anybody out there?
That's great. Appreciate the MDD taking that on, that's great.
Thank you. I'll get a cake that says 50th of Lakewood Village.
There you go.
That'd be cool.
All right, thanks, Linda.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have the discussion of current critical water conditions by me. So the good news is that we've, obviously we had rain, things have played out a bit. So what I am going to do effective, basically trying, I'll put it in the mayor's letter. We're going to roll it back to stage three. We now are, we meet the conditions for stage three, which will be three-day-a-week water, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So we're going to go to the mayor's. I'll put in the mayor's letter. It hasn't changed the underlying root problem. You still have an aquifer problem, you're still going to have to put in a leak one well, leak a bit two. We've tried to fix the root problem, we're going to find an aquifer well, except, but time being, I don't see a problem with going, rolling it back to stage three. What I'm hopeful is that in the, if you're watering twice for 10 minutes, you decide to water three times, then water three times for eight. Don't water three times for 10. That's what I'm hoping, but, you know, we'll see.
The level stayed all the way up this week, didn't it, last week?
Yeah, the last couple, the last, since, uh...